It is November nineteenth, twenty twenty, and I'm calling this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
To their public, for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible.
Justice for all.
There.
Amen. So, I have a clarifying question. I received an email from staff a little bit earlier today saying that we need to pull the Summer Walk Division Five plat approval from the consent agenda. Rick, are you on this meeting? Can you explain why that needs to be pulled?
It's like Rex being transferred right now.
I'm sorry, I just got pulled through the Zoom portal and I didn't catch what you were saying just before I came on.
So, I received an email from staff that says that I need to pull the Summer Walk Division Five plat approval from the consent agenda.
Okay, well, and the reason is, is we, as we uncovered late last week after the agenda put together that there are a few more items left to be installed on the site such as street lighting and several other punch list items. So they weren't completely done while the plat in itself is all set and ready to record. We need to make sure those items are done before we ask for council's final approval. And then what will happen then is then we would take it to the county, record it, and then the spots can be saleable. So we'll probably have it on the consent agenda at the next council meeting if they get those items completed.
Well, this is interesting because I was going to ask you to pull it anyway, so you could give us an update. This is the final plot approval of that, which has been a long time, you know, project for the city of Lacey. And so it'd just be really nice to give a quick update next time on what this final plat approval is for.
Sure.
Since the last one. So I was going to ask, I was going to ask you anyway, so it's, we'll just put it off to the one more meeting.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great because it is, if I can, it has a lot of history. It started, it was one of the projects I first started on when I came here in ninety nine in the, one of the first master plans comes through several master plan iterations. And now we're seeing it finalized. And so I'd be happy to provide an overview at the next council meeting when it comes up for final approval.
That would be great. But given that, I can again motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items taken off the number B, the Summer Walk Division Final Plat Approval.
I move that we approve the amended agenda and consent agenda items as listed with the one exception there.
Second. Then moving second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll hear the motion signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? The motion carries. We have amended agenda. And the first up on our amended agenda is a public comment on items not on the agenda. We do have a couple of people who signed up for a public comment. We didn't have any written public comments. The first person who's signed up is Lynn. It's you. Is Lynn available?
Mayor, one of them might be commenting on the budget hearing.
Yeah, guys, I know that as well. So Lynn?
Yes.
Can you please state your name and tell your, tell us where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes?
My name is Lynn Fitzhugh. I, I work for Thurston Climate Action Team. TCAT has been dedicated to coming before you for months now to bring attention to different parts of the climate mitigation plan, which you are opposed to vote on in January, to hold up important parts of the plan. Today, I would like to talk to you about sequestration in the plan as represented by both trees and regenerative agriculture. At first, these items were not making it into the plan because it was focused on carbon emission reductions. But about midway through the plan, the consultant became clear that we could not, in fact, make our scientifically modeled goals without sequestration, which wound up making up about half of local policy changes that we will be making. Our plan calls for increasing regenerative farming, a set of techniques that all draw down carbon and a far more, at a far more intensive rate than common industrial farming does. These techniques include things like cover cropping, biological farming, no till, low till, crop rotations, manure applications, grazing management, regenerative agricultural forestry, hedge rows, alley cropping, and quorum sensing. The focus on trees has a larger number of co-benefits. It is shovel-ready project when federal money comes down for economic stimulus. In addition to reducing air pollution, the trees themselves reduce asthma rates, prevent heat islands as much as a twelve-degree difference, lower heating and air conditioning bills by as much as three hundred and thirty dollars per tree per year within six feet of a building, providing stormwater retention, reducing drought damage, providing unduplicatable bird and wildlife habitat, and even have mental health benefits. They increase property values due to the aesthetic value, et cetera. The plan therefore calls for more tree planting, more tree protection, and the city's management of its trees. The plan also calls for urban density. Some people would see tree protection and urban density as conflicting goals. I want to strongly affirm that it is possible to have urban density with trees. TCAT will be happy to share models from other cities of how to do this. It involves not building out, which results in cutting trees. It involves limiting arbitrary cutting of trees for reasons other than, you know, the tree dying, and involves keeping big setbacks when building new developments. So we build up and not to the edge of properties, which actually makes the housing more affordable. And it involves incentivizing developers to keep as many trees in a design as possible while developing. So we look forward to working with you on these things in the year to come. Thank you. You're muted.
You're muted.
Oops. Next up, we have Karen Mesmer. Can you please say your name and please keep your comments about three minutes? And you can, Karen, if you'd like to unmute yourself and or.
There we go.
Turn on your video, turn on your video too, if you'd like.
Oh, there we go. Are we set? Oh, sorry. There we go. Okay.
Good to see you.
Thank, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Karen Mesmer. I live in Olympia and I spend some of my time and money in Lacey. I want to thank you, Mayor and Council, for your ongoing participation and support for the climate mitigation plan. This regional approach makes so much sense since this problem of climate change has no boundaries. One aspect of the plan that I want to point out, and Lynn has certainly covered it in more depth, is the importance of trees. Trees help to sequester carbon, and as Lynn mentioned, we cannot really meet our targets without sequestration. Lacey's been a tree city for many years, so you already know some of the benefits of trees. And now we know that they're also so important for addressing climate change. Taking action on trees in our urban areas seems like a pretty easy action to take because there are so many other benefits. They make it really much more pleasant to walk. They provide habitat for birds. They keep our urban landscapes cooler when it's hot, hot in the summertime. So this is something that I, I think on the, the tree part of this is something that might feel real natural for Lacey to begin to take more action on to retain your urban trees and to grow more trees in your urban area and preserve the ones that already are in place. I want to thank you for your support of the climate plan, and I urge you to move forward to adopt the plan and to begin to take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, we are very proud that we are one of the first Tree City USAs in the state of Washington. Have been for a very, very long time. We take a lot of pride in our trees in Lacey. So I appreciate it. So that's all we had signed up for a public comment for today. So we'll go to our, our next item, which is our public hearing. And so I will open up our final twenty twenty-one budget hearing, and I'll turn it over to Troy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, Council. We are reaching the final stages of the two thousand twenty-one budget. Tonight, we're conducting the final public hearing on the budget. Before I make comments, I would like to thank the city manager and the, my fellow directors for their leadership in putting this budget together. It truly is a minimalist approach in, in reaction to uncertain economic times due to the pandemic. Yet, at the same time, it continues to move the organization forward with future planning as well as investment in infrastructure and the maintenance and repair of various infrastructure projects. So again, thank you for their leadership, and obviously they have great support staff to help put this budget together as well, and to you, Council, for all of your guidance and wisdom so far in the process. So we do have an adjusted amount for the proposed two thousand twenty-one budget. The proposed budget as it stands now is one hundred and sixty-one million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. This is an overall decrease of about three point eight, eight million dollars compared to the two thousand twenty amended budget. The primary reasons for the variance or the decrease is related to one-time transactions from the CARES Act and the Small Business Stabilization Fund transactions. And we also have lower levels in certain areas in terms of capital. And these, all of these costs are partially offset by inflationary increases such as the increases to labor. In terms of your general fund budget, it, it too has changed since the first proposed budget was, went to print. The general fund does provide the services to the citizens that I think they most identify with, such as police, engineering, streets, parks and recreation, city council, planning and economic development. So as it stands now, the two thousand twenty-one general fund budget is fifty-one million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. This is a decrease of about eight point nine million or almost fifteen percent. The same reasons for the overall budget reduction are affecting the general fund as well. So again, one-time transactions related to the CARES Act distribution and Small Business Stabilization Fund transaction as well as changes to capital programs. We do want to point out four changes or the four changes that have occurred to the budget. This is a result of the discussions that happened at the last public hearing on November fifth. The first is an increase to the property tax projection. We did receive the refund levy for two thousand twenty, plus there were slight increases to new construction. So this is a sixty-five thousand, thirty-nine dollar increase to the property tax projection. The budget as it stands has reinstated the sixty thousand neighborhood grant program within the city council's budget. And we do have a slight increase of seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars related to the city's share of the operation and maintenance of the Amtrak station. And the final change is a fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollar change, and this is really more of an accounting change within the budget. We are moving some funds back to the departments from an internal service fund. This is the equipment rental fund. We're treating that within the budget. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to accept any public testimony on the budget and for staff to receive any final direction from the city council as to any changes you would like to see in the proposed budget. You are scheduled to consider the budget for adoption at your next council meeting on December third. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council.
So since this is a public hearing, and we do have one person signed up to speak, let's go to Karen McMichael. Let's uh, go to Karen McMichael and uh, and get some input here. Would you like to unmute yourself and you can also, if you'd like, yeah, there you go.
Hey, thank you. Um, and it's really a blessing to be able to meet with you. So thank you for hosting these sessions online and on the Facebook and everywhere that we could uh, make this accessible. Um, I live in Lacey, uh, twelve oh-six Hall Street. And I'm, as a homeowner and as a head of household. I really believe that financial responsibility is paramount to. Um, you know, running a home successfully. And when we think about running a city, uh, that fiscal responsibility really, really has to focus on. Uh, you know, taking care of things even when things get, get hard. So making those small investments and nipping things, you know, uh, or catching things before they grow exponentially. Um, it does seem that. Supporting this very, very small increase would be logical for our city. Uh, when I'm thinking about Lacey City voters with uh, Prop One and supporting our first responders. And when we had a levy for education, everybody came up and stepped up. And even though these times are hard, we put the needs of our city first. So I think if the voters really understood that one percent uh, increasing that to one hundred and one percent. Not like a whole new, uh, large amount was, or even less, I heard the uh. Point six percent increase or therein equates to less than a quarter a month uh, for, for homeowners. As a homeowner myself, it, it makes fiscal sense to, to address this now. So I wanted to come and uh, support that. And even though it would be uh, very sweet uh, to uh, just not have to pay more taxes and get all the benefits. It seems that uh, this is imperative to preserving. Our way of life in, in Lacey and uh, thank you for your service and allowing for me to comment tonight.
Thank you. I really appreciate that and it's really, really nice to hear. We don't hear that very often amongst coming saying, you know. Even at the full one percent, it's, it would be like three dollars in, you know, increase for you for the year of a property owner. But, and we're very aware of how difficult times are right now, but we really appreciate you caring about the city and understanding that. Um, I really appreciate you uh, giving your testimony today.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any, any comments from the council? On this budget? Seeing none, I'm going to close the final uh, twenty twenty-one uh, budget hearing. And then um, next up is a referral from our planning commission. Our twenty twenty comprehensive plan amendments shows Ryan Andrews.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Let me share my screen. All right. Thanks again. Good evening. Um, so tonight, uh, in front of you, you have an ordinance to adopt the twenty twenty. Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission. As you're aware, the Growth Management Act requires that the city's comprehensive plan be amended only once per year. Um, and that is uh, what is in front of you tonight. As part of the annual cycle of comprehensive plan amendments for twenty twenty, the city received. Two private applicant initiated requests as well as completed a city request. To update our stormwater comprehensive plan. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to provide some information on the two private requests first. And then some on the stormwater comp plan um, at the end. And, and I'm going to go through these in, in the order that they are um, in your packet. Uh, the private requests were added to the docket back um, at the joint meeting way back in January twenty-third. So first up is a, a proposed comprehensive plan amendment and rezone request in Meridian Campus. Um, at the intersection of thirty-first Avenue Northeast and Willamette Drive Northeast. At the, the northeast corner of that intersection. Uh, the request is from Community Commercial. Uh, it's an existing eleven point five-one acre parcel. Zone Community Commercial and the proposal is uh, to rezone nine point five-one acres. To high-density residential uh, with two acres remaining at the southwest corner of that property designated as Neighborhood Commercial. That um, is shown here on, on this slide. The, the property is undeveloped um, at this point. Um, and you can see um, the roundabout at thirty-first and Willamette. It's just to the north and east of that. The purpose of the request is um, the community commercial zone in Meridian Campus has existed essentially since Meridian Campus has been developed. And the purpose of the community commercial uh, district is to support large-scale retail and commercial activities. That serve a number of planning areas. And so it's to have a, essentially a large shopping center or something like that, uh, developed for this property. Given Meridian Campus's development potential, um, it's nearing its build-out. Um, and given that this property is not um, in proximity to freeway frontage or, or large arterial frontage. It really um, is not very viable for that community commercial designation. Um, this was made clear in a market analysis that was completed by uh, the, the applicant. And showed that um, really the highest and best use of this property is for um, higher-density residential. Um, as you're all aware, our current housing market uh, is um, extremely hot. And um, our multifamily market is, is definitely um, pushing forward at this point. And um, so the, the highest and best use of this property is, is more related to high-density residential. But we want to make sure that in keeping that, we also keep the neighborhood commercial part of this, which allows for neighborhood scale retail. Um, at the corner as this thirty-first and Willamette is an important uh, uh, community node. And is actually identified in our comprehensive plan um, as such. Our comprehensive plan does support the request. Um, obviously it does support the need for more high-density residential. As well as this area to have at least a portion be a neighborhood scale commercial. Infrastructure and transportation analysis wise, uh, the, the property is well-served by uh, city infrastructure, water, sewer. Um, streets, um, transportation wise, there is not going to be much change from the existing zone. To a future um, neighborhood commercial, uh, multifamily zone at, for the high-density residential zone. Um, this was shown in the, the analysis provided by the applicant. One of the things that uh, did occur with this project was an early open house back on August eleventh. Uh, but this was a way for the applicant to meet with concerned neighbors about the potential change to the zoning. And um, highlighted some, some concerns from the neighbors that were, were able to be addressed early. And I, I'd like to hand it to the applicant. They did a very good job in getting out in front of this and made it much easier when it came to. Um, holding a, a hearing with the planning commission. Those neighborhood concerns, um, first of all was compatibility with the multifamily development. And single-family residential surrounding. Uh, concerns about crime. There was uh, at least the impression that multifamily development creates more. Um, opportunities for crime. Uh, we did reach out to Lacey, Lacey PD. And um, the police department did confirm that there are no statistics supporting multifamily development. Is any more or less likely to uh, create any additional crime. And then traffic, as I mentioned, traffic uh, was a concern from the neighbors, but as uh, the analysis showed. Um, there was not a net increase in traffic between the commercial use and the high-density residential use. With the neighborhood commercial area. The second um, private applicant initiated rezone uh, was for ten parcels of approximately sixty acres. Uh, currently a mixture of undeveloped properties and small warehouses located along Carpenter Road Northeast. Between Interstate Five and Britton Parkway. Um, so you'll see here on the map, we've got Carpenter Road running through the middle of the proposed area for rezone. Britton Parkway on the north, Interstate Five on the south. Uh, currently, the, the um, western side of Carpenter Road is a mixture of low-density residential. Three to six units per acre, uh, our lone mineral extraction zone. And then on the eastern side is zoning of Hoxbury Business District, business, business commercial. Um, and the application is to rezone uh, these to light industrial commercial. Uh, you'll see here, here's an aerial photograph of the area. Uh, most of it is actually undeveloped. Uh, the area west of Carpenter Road is a former gravel mine. Uh, east of Carpenter Road is a combination of, of smaller uh, warehouses that support. Um, you know, uh, equipment rentals, equipment maintenance and some undeveloped property to the north. The purpose of this uh, request is to consider rezoning the property to light industrial commercial. To provide more flexibility for future development of the property. Um, as the light industrial commercial zone allows for a broader variety of uses uh, than what is currently zoned. Uh, as I mentioned, the, especially west of Carpenter Road, you have that existing mineral extraction zone, which is. Um, the only permitted use in the mineral extraction zone is mining. Um, and since the mineral extraction has ceased, it does make uh, sense to have that rezone to a higher and, and better use. Second, the lack of an interchange in the, at Carpenter Road in the near term affects the viability of the Hoxbury Business District. Business Commercial Zone on the western side. The uh, northeast area sub-area plan identified that Carpenter Road at I-five would have a future interchange. With this not being any likely, with this not having likely um, development anytime soon. Really affects the viability of commercial on the west side of, of Carpenter Road. The rezone would also provide a transition uh, between the residential to the west and the Hoxbury Business District to the east. Um, additionally, the request would also meet the city's goals for economic development. Related to accommodating smaller footprint, light industrial users in the Hoxbury area. Uh, and would support those local small businesses. Uh, the applicant did su- submit a market analysis um, that supported the request. And um, ensured that we do have enough um, light industrial commercial zone. Um, or excuse me, Hoxbury Business District Zone after this is zoned to Hoxbury, but light industrial commercial, sorry. Um, finally, the infrastructure and transportation analysis, infrastructure wise, the, the area is actually well-served with water and sewer. Both in Carpenter Road running through this area to support future development. Transportation wise, the area is uh, we'll say, you know, it's still got the old farm-to-market Carpenter Road for the most part. Um, there are transportation projects planned for the area, including a roundabout at Hog- or at Hawk, uh. At Carpenter Road and uh, and Britton Parkway. As well as uh, it is also our transportation improvement plan to improve Carpenter Road between Britton Parkway. And Interstate Five. Finally, uh, in addition to these two private amendments, the city also reviews and periodically updates the various utility elements. Of our comprehensive plan. Uh, this year, the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan uh, was updated. It was last updated in twenty thirteen. Uh, the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan is a guide for activities, programs and projects of the city's storm and surface water utility. Acts as an informational reference for Lacey Stormwater Utility Ri- Rate Payers. The three main factors driving the twenty twenty Stormwater Comprehensive Plan update are that we have increasing requirements mandated. By an updated uh, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four uh, NPDES Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit. We also are completing a necessary update to the Stormwater Capital Improvement Program Project Plan. As well as an updated Stormwater Utility Fin- Financial Analysis, including the recommendations for service charge rates. To ensure that our, we're adequately funding our utility uh, with uh, programs and projects. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for the Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments at their meeting on October sixth. The Planning Commission received oral and written comments for the private amendments, which are captured in the meeting minutes and included in your, in the record. That you have in front of you tonight. Uh, no public comments were received for the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval on each amendment to the city council. With that, I'd be um, happy to answer any questions you might have. Staff and Plan Commission both are recommending approval of the ordinance. That's in front of you tonight to adopt the twenty twenty Comprehensive Plan Amendments. But before I take any questions, I just wanted to uh, recognize the members of the Planning Commission and all their hard work. This uh, in essence completes the twenty twenty work program for the Planning Commission. And it has not been the most normal of years. Um, so I'd really like to uh, thank the Planning Commission for their flexibility and their diligence in completing the, the work that they had to do. And the work in front of them um, in twenty twenty. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, motion please.
I move that we approve ordinance fifteen seventy-two to adopt the twenty twenty Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. As recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. Moving to second discussion, council member stood.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Ryan, uh, the first part of your report um, on the rezoning, the eleven and a half acres.
Yeah.
Directly to the left in that housing development, I believe it's Preston Road and thirty-first.
Okay.
That's that undeveloped portion of that um, development was supposed to be multi-housing also, right? Is it, was it, was the density the same? And do they expect to develop, develop that relatively soon?
So are you talking about the property immediately to the north?
Uh, no, like immediately to the west of Willamette, not the corner, but where the housing developed a couple, a couple of years ago. That um, just south of uh, this um, Salish Middle School, that housing development. There's a, a section out of it that's supposed to be multi-housing that isn't developed yet, part of that master plan.
That's, that's correct. Yes, that will be multifamily. It, it's, it kind of terminates at a cul-de-sac. Um, you know, you'd north of the area where like the coffee shop and the daycars and stuff are.
Yeah.
Yes, that'll be, that'll be high-density residential as well. Um, so that'll be multifamily.
So my only question is, do we see that being developed anytime soon? Because if there's no market for it, why would we want to change the zoning across the street?
I think most of the re- remaining parcels of high-density in that area are relatively small. Um, and so, you know, when, when national or, or regional uh, multifamily developers are looking for pieces of property. They're looking for larger properties like this one that is.
For more units, right?
And so, um, you know, the, it makes this property in particular that it's in front of you tonight more viable for a larger multifamily development. Than those smaller, you know, three to five acre parcels. And that's probably why those are yet to be developed is that, um, you know, typically in a, you know, pro forma. Uh, a, a large regional developer is looking for, you know, a certain size to be able to have their project pencil out.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Great. Is there any other questions?
Uh, I just wanted to be clear on something, so um. It, of the eleven point five-one acres, i- it looked to me like two point five-one was going to be strictly commercial. And there would be some storefrontage there. Did I get that right? And then the other nine acres would be developed for multifamily usage, is that?
Right. So nine and a half acres as, as high-density residential and two acres immediately at the intercept. Immediately adjacent to the intersection of thirty-first and Willamette would be neighborhood commercial. That's um, neighborhood scale retail. So those are, you know, those that uh, kind of services that you would need on a day-to-day basis. So um, you know, uh, small offices, um, uh, small, you know, retail convenience stores. Um, you know, hair salon.
But it would, that would be across the street or that would be cut from the.
From that would be on this piece of property, the subject property, yeah, right immediately, uh, north and uh, east of the intersection.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah.
Boy, this year's been a crazy year. I remember when um, these two uh, plan amendments were proposed to us. Soon from, from the applicants and so it's always great to see. from from the applicants. And so it's always great to see, go through the process and um hopefully, we we can accom- accommodate those requests when they come through. And I think in this circumstance, both these requests make a lot of sense. So I'll be supporting. Uh Councilmember Miller?
Oh, yeah, one other thing. On your um on the second proposal uh between I five and Britton Parkway on Carpenter. Um would that mean that we would have to widen that road if we went down this road?
It does not change any kind of commitments as far as that goes. Um it it's already on our transportation improvement plan to improve Carpenter Road um in this area. Um the only thing really it would mean is if so if any of these uh properties developed before the city went in and improved the road, they would have to actually improve their proportionate frontage of of Carpenter with their project. So if if a project went forward before the city completed any improvements to to Carpenter Road here, um they would have to complete their their frontage. Um if they waited until the city came through, then um it's likely that they would not need to do that. Um but it doesn't change anything as far as schedule or those kinds of things and improvements to that to that portion of Carpenter.
And okay, and then lastly, you had mentioned um the the potential, I guess it's pretty far down the road for an an exit uh ramp to possibly be built there.
Right. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen. This is something we've been uh talking about for quite a while. That the issue that we run into there is that it's less than a mile away from the next interchange.
Yeah, I was ju- that's what I was gonna bring up.
And so the DOT is not too happy, you know. It's funny, because, you know, I ten years ago, I remember uh saying, boy, we should really have an interchange there at Carpenter, because because it it's it's interesting, because it's right in the middle of our town, right? I mean, that is an interchange that a lot of people would use if you could if you could use it. But um yeah, it's with DOT rules, that's there is not gonna happen. And then plus, on the other side, it's re- it's really tight. Full interchange in there, although we we have had some conversations about um incl- um had the new slip ramp that's been put in, having that slip ramp come all the way down to Carpenter Road. Um and so, we have actually talked to DOT a little bit about that and could be possible, but that's just a off-ramp, right? It won't it won't be a full interchange if that even even that happened. So, anyway.
That was all I had.
Okay. A- anything else? Then it's uh been moved and seconded to approve ordinance fifteen seventy-two. Adopt the twenty twenty annual comprehensive plan amendments as recommended by the Plan Commission. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So next up is uh resolutions. Um the first one is uh resolution declaring substantial need for the twenty twenty-one adverb tax, Troy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um if it pleases the council, I'll have this PowerPoint cover the next two resolutions. We do have a somewhat unique agenda before you tonight. And our goal here is to present three options for the council in terms of the property tax increase for two thousand twenty-one. Um the three options are a the one percent increase. Uh the second is a point six zero two percent increase, and the third would be no action by the council, which would result in a zero percent increase. So like I said, the first option is enacting the one percent increase. Um the state statute uh sets a maximum property tax increase of one percent or inflation, whichever is less. Uh this does happen to be a year in which that inflation factor is less than one percent. Again, it's the point six zero two percent. If the council uh chooses to increase property taxes by one percent, it will require the passage of a substantial need resolution, which is Resolution ten ninety-eight, which is the first resolution on in your agenda. Um there is another part of the statute that does allow uh cities to increase the property tax greater than inflation. If it does pass and declare this substantial need, uh this will also, of course, all three options will will require the passage of a property tax ordinance. The second option is to simply take the inflationary factor that is allowed by uh state code. And again, that inflation factor is point six zero two percent. This still does require a separate action by the city council to authorize this increase. It is required by state statute that the city council authorize any increase with a separate action uh that both states the change by percentage and dollar amount, and this and Resolution ten ninety-nine before you um does uh exactly that. And then, as I mentioned, the the final option for the council is to act on neither one of these resolutions, therefore um will have a zero percent increase uh for two thousand twenty, and that the exceptions would be the refund levy and the new construction uh assessments that are added to the assessment rolls, and these are both exempt from that one percent. The two thousand twenty-one budget as proposed does assume the one percent increase. And here you can see the total levies for two thousand twenty-one as proposed by the budget. Uh the general levy with the one percent. Uh the projection is seven million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. This is an increase of almost four hundred and thirty, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Uh the city does have three separate voter-approved bond levies, and you can see these here on the chart. Uh these are simply the amounts of debt service that are required in two thousand twenty-one. And uh um you can see the various changes in those uh debt payments from year to year. I do want to show you the uh details behind the general property tax levy increase. So we will start with the two thousand twenty property tax levy or this year's levy. Uh seven million one hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. The new construction limit for next year is three hundred and six thousand four hundred and nine dollars. Uh this is a result of adding uh three hundred and eleven point seven million dollars in new construction to the property tax rolls. Um a significant increase. It's not a record, but uh certainly much more than our long-term uh financial planning assumes in in terms of new construction on an annual basis. Um you here, you could see the one percent uh revenue limit of seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And this year's refund levy amount is sixty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, which gives you your total increase of four hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars. And as a reminder, the refund levy are, that is the amount of refunds that were granted by the county throughout uh the last part of two thousand nineteen and uh the first nine months of two thousand twenty. So this, these amounts were legally authorized to collect, and since they're refunded, we are allowed to carry that authority forward to the next year.
I I know how difficult this is for people to understand, especially this this one percent. Uh uh again, we're not talking about raising everyone's property tax one percent. We're talking about one percent of the that's spread across all the tax, the property taxpayers in 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 Lacey. And and that's I know it's so hard for people to understand the difference between those two, but um I'll I'll anyway, I'll let you continue.
It's as if you're reading my notes. Um I did want to highlight that the overall impact is seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and that is over the entire city assessment. So
Yeah.
Certainly don't want to discount the impact of tax increases on citizens, but in the overall realm of the entire city budget, it actually is a fairly small amount.
I know, it's about, didn't we say it's about around three bucks for the average for the year for the average household?
I think it's three dollars and thirty-two cents and
Okay.
Still there money.
Get there in the next slide. So I do want to show um the overall um projected impact on a on a typical Lacey home. And this, these numbers here on the slide do include the one percent uh increase. And we're using a starting point of a three hundred and fifty thousand our home in two thousand twenty. Uh the overall assess valuation increase for this year is about four point one percent. And that is a change from the last presentation I made to council. Um so when you apply that four point one increase um to the three hundred and fifty thousand, that home uh next year will be worth three hundred and sixty-four thousand. So here you could see the various levy rates. Um as we talked about before, as assess valuation goes up, the levy rate comes down, and you could certainly see that illustrated in the projected levy rates between uh two thousand twenty and what we're projecting for two thousand twenty-one. And um here you can see the uh the difference uh in terms of uh property taxes for a typical home. Uh this difference is about five dollars and thirty-one cents um for a typical home. I do want to illustrate the uh the difference between the one percent and the point six or a two percent increase. And um here we're using the the same two, three hundred and sixty-four thousand our homes. Um you could see, of course, a slightly uh lower levy rate for the point uh six zero two percent option. And we end up with um about a dollar thirty-two difference between, and this is over a a course of a year, a dollar thirty-two difference between the one percent and the point six zero two percent increase. And then, of course, I want to highlight the difference between the one percent and the uh zero percent or no rate increase for two thousand twenty-one, again, using the same three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar home. Um you see uh just about a one penny difference per thousand in the projected levy rate under the scenario where there's no increase. And again, this is a three dollar and thirty cent, thirty-two cent difference over the course of a year on a typical Lacey home. Um I do want to present this slide. Councilmember Cox asked about the the long-term ramifications of not taking in the one percent. And um I do have to admit, I may have misled the council a little bit uh at the public hearing. Um I stated that the ten-year impact was about four hundred thousand. That's actually packed, as you could see here from the slide. So really what this illustrates is in it the top half of the uh slide is if we took the one percent for the next five years and what the impact would be to the general levy. So you could see it increases from seven point five nine per five nine million up to about eight point two four million um with the one percent uh increase going up, compounding in a sense. And then uh the bottom half of the slide, we have uh the impact or the projection to the uh property tax levy with uh putting a pause on the one percent increase just for two thousand twenty-one, and then in two thousand twenty-two um exercising the one percent of levy increase. And you could see the annual variance. Um it does have a compounding impact from year to year of, you know, we go from seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars in two thousand twenty-one to seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars in the second year. And it really does have a cumulative impact through the five years, but it's just a, like it is, like I said, it's a cumulative impact. So year one, we don't collect seventy-one thousand dollars, and year two, we don't collect slightly higher than that because of the compounding interest. So I mean, year two, the total impact's one hundred and almost hundred forty-five thousand. And then, of course, at the end of five years, it's um three hundred and almost three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Um the actual ten-year projection in terms of impact is about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So quite a difference from the four hundred thousand that we had discussed at the at the last hearing, so I apologize for that.
But I think the other thing that's really illustrates is the how much of an impact new construction has on it. And that's a big that, that's saving our taxpayers so much money when you have a big year like we did for new construction. Because again, you're spreading it out across all the taxpayers that that and I I I just think it's a hard for people to understand um what that actual effect is for on a city and our our finances. But I mean, you can see in the years out, it's considerably less for what we're doing for new construction. I we, you know, tho- those are guesses, obviously. We don't, we don't know what those new construction numbers are going to be. We've been well ahead of those numbers um in the recent years. We know it's going to slow down at some point, but um that new construction number has a huge impact on that levy rate.
It does, and it's even more illustrated in the bond levy rate, because there aren't any increases whatsoever within that levy. So it is purely a deduction or a reduction in the uh levy rate. But right, the, you know, the analogy is it's the same, roughly the same amount of tax with more taxpayers contributing towards that, which lowers the overall individual impact. So yes, absolutely.
Mayor, can I make a comment about the private sector in in terms to what you guys are talking about also?
Sure.
So like in my line of business, if you have a a small building on a giant lot and you're leasing it out to your tenants, their triple net is higher because the their square footage has to cover the entire lot, not just their suite. So if you were to re- redevelop and and um ex- expand your uh building per square footage-wise, your tenants are paying less per square foot um because it's it's um it's a shared expense more. Yeah. As compared to, you know, being a higher per square foot. So it's a reinvestment opportunity also for the private sector and a savings for the tenants and the uh commercial.
And that's a, and that's a good sort of example of what it what the levy rate is for us too, right? Because if you expand that base, it costs everyone a little bit less, right? So go ahead, Troy.
Uh looks like the deputy mayor might have a comment or question.
But just only not a co- uh question, but uh based on our commenter, you know, paying twenty-five or twenty-six cents more a month for making sure that uh we are following our budget and keeping up with our expenses is uh pretty minimal amounts to begin with.
Yeah. Go ahead, Troy.
Um I did want to show what I would call a compounding impact of not taking one percent. And it only really compounds if we choose not to not to take the one percent over multiple years. And um it's a very different result in terms of what the long-term impact. And you could see here compared to the three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar impact at the year, at the end of year five in the uh one year in which we don't take the one percent versus all five years at, you know, one point one five million. So um very much a different um impact to the future levy and impact to the city's general levy and ability to pay for expenses. So um in terms of um, you know, the point of order for council, um our suggestion is that you do consider uh the substantial need resolution, which is the first one listed on your agenda. I I will remind the council that this this does take a majority plus one to pass. And in our case, that will be five. It's based on the total amount of council members and not those in attendance. So the number uh to get a uh aff- affirmative vote on this resolution is five. Um the council, of course, could choose not to. Um maybe it doesn't get a motion. Maybe it doesn't get the number of affirmative votes. In that case, it would fail. Uh then we would suggest you consider Resolution ten ninety-nine, which is uh the more normal authorizing resolution, which would authorize the point six zero two percent increase. Uh the same uh consideration by council, and maybe it gets a motion, maybe it doesn't, maybe you uh it doesn't get enough affirmative votes, and this is a simple majority. And if that's the case, uh the property tax increase for two thousand twenty-one will default to uh zero. And there's no action required of that other than adopting the um property tax ordinance uh next up in your agenda. So um with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you please uh close your screen there so I can see everyone? Uh Councilmember Stedman?
Um council gets a increase in salary every year, correct? Isn't it like three percent or?
That's a dollar straight dollar amount. It's like fifty dollars a year or something like that.
Yeah, which I mean, okay, it'll make sense later during our discussion once we
Well, um I'm gonna take a shot at this. I'm gonna move that we adopt a declaration of substantial need resolution um declaring um the for the purposes of authorizing for the twenty twenty-one adverb tax increase. Your second.
I second it.
Discussion, Councilmember Stedman.
Okay, so I came in here tonight um thinking I was gonna support the uh sixty-two uh point six two percent, point six zero two percent. Um but, you know, the citizen that talked earlier today mentioned literally a quarter. So you're taking that three dollars and over four and a half weeks of a month, you divide that three dollars it the difference of a buck seventeen, I think it is. Um what I'm getting at is, I think it'd be a far better impact to the citizens if us council members didn't take a pay raise for the year and did the one percent as compared to doing the point six zero two percent, and we get a raise. So we share the wealth with the citizens. But we also have the means to keep our level of service at at the height is in in what our citizens expect when you live in Lacey and not somewhere else. when you live in Lacey and not somewhere else. So I'll leave it at that and I'll vote accordingly.
Councilor Kunkel.
Uh, is this something that we have to decide on tonight or can we put it on another council meeting?
No, it has to be decided tonight.
Okay. I prefer Councilmember Greenstein would have the input on this.
So I know where Councilmember Greenstein is 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 at, and since he's not here, he's he's swirled goes down as a no vote, right? Because you need five votes. So just give you a heads up on on that. Uh, Councilor Cox?
No, I understand. I understand.
Councilor Cox?
Thank you. Are you finished, Ed?
Okay. I am, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, I support the full one percent. I think it's it's not a huge burden on the taxpayers in Lacey. We're in the midst of a year right now where we've had unanticipated expenses last year too. Um, and I think the city needs to be as nimble as it can. We've already cut the budget, you know, it's we don't have a huge budget increase coming through. It's pretty Spartan and I think to handicap ourselves by, you know, anything is is just penny wise and pound foolish.
Let me um go around to uh, do you have anything you'd like to add, Councilmember Miller, before I go back to Councilor Kunkel? Nope. Okay, Councilor Kunkel?
I I'm still amiss as to understanding the substantial needs uh for the one percent raise. I I I don't see where in the budget that we are shortfall uh to where we can justify substantial need, but I don't want to, I don't want to drag this on and on all night. Um, but that's just just my comments.
Yeah, you know, it's I think we've we've had this conversation with this council quite a bit, you know, um for this year, for the the seventy seven thousand, is our budget dependent on seventy seven thousand dollars next year? No, no, it's not. I think what I think what Troy tried to show is what that compounding cost to the city is in 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 the out years. And so it's
We decide this every year, though. It's it's, yeah, for every odd year. So we're, it's not likely that we're going to continue a a trend of of not supporting uh inner tax increases. So I understand the compounding effect. Uh, I understand what Troy has explained in in his in his uh uh presentation. I I'm not confused about anything. Uh, the only concern I have is I just don't see where the substantial need is at this time, and that that's where I stand.
So anyway, um, let's get, let's get on with this, let's vote. And so it's been, uh, Councilmember Miller, go ahead. You're on mute, buddy.
Okay, so I I spent a lot of time thinking about this particular one uh because of where we are, you know, as a community, as a country. And uh, you know, in the end, I had asked myself, you know, Malcolm, are you willing to pay? Um, you know, twenty seven, twenty five cents so that we can continue to provide, you know, the level of service that we provide. And and I had to consider, you know, well, what kind of level of service have we been providing? And I look at our capital improvement projects, and I look at our roads, and I look at um all the different things that we've done to make sure that the city runs smooth and and better than ever, you know. Um, when I got here in two thousand one, um, you know, we uh Mullen Road wasn't even punched through. And uh, that's made a tremendous difference for a lot of people. Uh, and the project that that just got completed on college is a direct reflection of 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 some of these funds, you know, I I think that that roundabout makes it safer for kids uh to go to school, to get to school. It was dangerous before and it was dangerous for decades. Uh, and as they start, uh, you know, on this, on this Ruttle Road project on the twenty third, um, I, you know, as a homeowner, you know, I have to ask myself, are you willing to continue to help um make these things happen? You know, I'm I'm not a fan of increasing my bottom line. I'm I'm just not. I, you know, I'm a loan officer. And it's it's all about ratios and and numbers to me. Um, but this just makes sense uh in that can I, can I afford a quarter or three bucks a year to to keep this place running the way it has been because I appreciate the services that the city provides? Uh, absolutely. I I can't, I can't say that that, you know, Lacey is not doing its job. Um, and and I don't see this, I don't necessarily see this as a pay raise. I it it seems as if um, this is an extension of of uh an agreement that we've already had. Uh, so, you know, whereas, you know, I I've met Kirian before. Uh, and uh, I I know that, you know, uh, she's a single mom. And I know that, you know, she would for her to come out and say, you know what, I'll pay another quarter so that I can continue to get what I get, what I'm getting. That was, that was big for me. Because, you know, I I am a two income household. She's not. And even she's willing to say, you know what, we we provide great services and and she and I don't want to miss out on any of them. Uh, and I appreciate the level of service that you guys do, and I'll pay another quarter uh this month for you guys to continue on. That was, that was big for me. So um, if she can do it, I can do it.
Very cool. That I think in my my ten years is the first time I've ever seen someone sign up in support of the the one person. I have, I don't think I've seen it before. So, you know, I I don't know her, but you know, thank tell her again, thank thank her for for uh coming on today and and giving us two cents. It does, it means a lot, you know, it means a lot to me. So um, is there any other discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved in second. Um, all those in favor, can you please raise your hand? All those opposed, can you? Are you, are you opposed on this one? Okay, the the motion passes.
Mayor, if I may? I would like to make the motion that council freezes their annual increase for this year only.
You know, that that needs, that needs a a bigger discussion. Um council member, uh, we're not, we don't have a full council here yet. Um, and we do have time between now and next in the in the
I'll I'll withdraw my, but I'll I'll withdraw my motion. Okay, that's, that's a great point.
Um, so next up is uh under resolutions, is a resolution authorizing the twenty twenty one adverb. I know that now we have to go through this most these steps now. So um, this is the next step. Troy?
Um, yes, I, well, I'm not sure they even have to consider the next resolution since you passed this one.
Oh, you're right. You're right. We don't. No, and then I just freeze, but I turn off my screen and so now I need to come come back and find my.
The ordinance though, right?
Yes, now we'll go on to the ordinance.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So um, within your packet, you do have three different versions of the uh two thousand twenty one uh property tax uh ordinance. Um, based on your action on the uh resolution ten ninety eight, uh, you should be only considering the one percent increase uh resolution, which is our ordinance, which is the first listed. Um, I'll keep my comments brief since, you know, we covered most of it in the previous discussion. But I would also like to uh remind the council and the public that we did have a strong construction year. We added about three hundred and eleven point seven million dollars to the uh assessment rolls, which results in three hundred and six thousand dollar increase to property tax. Um, a couple of comments on what happened to overall assessed valuation. Our overall assessed valuation increased about six hundred and eight million. So that means existing assessed valuation increased about two hundred and ninety seven million. And as I stated before, that's about a four point one percent increase. Um, we will note this is actually lower than we've seen in recent years. We've seen closer to double digit increases. Um, I, you know, I still think that's a very strong growth number, but it's, you know, roughly half of what we've been experiencing. But that just tells you what the economy has been doing the last three or four years. So in terms of the um, the details of the rest uh ordinance before you, again, this will set the two thousand twenty uh general property taxes at seven million five hundred and eighty eight thousand three hundred and forty four dollars. Uh, this gives us an estimated levy rate of about ninety six point three cents per thousand. Uh, this is uh, you know, even lower than this year. As as the mayor mentioned, the impact of adding new construction, it's bringing our levy rate even lower. Uh, this is an overall increase of four hundred and forty two thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars. Again, that is made up of the new construction uh levy, which is three hundred and six thousand four hundred and nine dollars. The one percent uh increase, which is seventy one thousand four hundred and fifty seven dollars. And again, the two thousand twenty refund levy amount is sixty four thousand seven hundred and eighty five uh dollars, which again makes up your six four hundred and forty two thousand dollar increase. Uh, the ordinance also does establish the two thousand twenty one uh levy for the uh voter approved debt. Um, the total levy for debt, the three combined is one million one hundred and forty five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And the projected uh levy rate is about fourteen point seven cents per thousand, and this too is coming down because of that addition of new construction. So the request or the uh suggestion of staff to council is to pass the uh ordinance that includes the full one percent increase for two thousand twenty one.
I'd be very curious to go back uh when we did those bond levies to to um figure out what they thought the levy rate was going to be compared to what it actually is today. It was, we've had so much new construction between when we originally passed those well before any of us were on council um to where we're at now. And at some point, we thought what the lev- the rate was gonna be, but it's just gone down so much over the years, just like having a levy rate under a dollar at ninety six cents for all the services that we provide. I mean, that is crazy. It's never been that low in the history of Lacey, so.
City manager and I have had discussion about that. I can't remember off the top of my head what those original projections for the leverage rates are, but
I bet you it was way high. They thought it was gonna be way, way, you know.
A lot higher. I mean, obviously, the impact of growth and new construction, but we also refunded all three of those
Yep.
on rates that saved a considerable amount of interest as well. So um, yeah, certainly, this has been far less impactful on property owners than anticipated.
Yeah, you know, and I think that's a really something we should be very proud of, of how much money we've saved the average taxpayer in the city of Lacey, not only through our um, through our community and economic development and attracting businesses, attracting, you know, uh new commercial, the look at the warehouse district, all that's added to it. Um, but refunding those levies and re- rechanging the rates on it when we had the opportunity to do it. It's saved taxpayers so much money in Lacey. And I'm, you know, I I don't want to raise, I don't want to raise any taxes. I don't know anyone wants to raise any taxes, but I think what we get here, what we give our citizens in the city of Lacey for what we're asking, it's gotta be the best deal. Than Thurston County. I mean, it's gotta be one of the best deals in 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 the state, so.
It it's worth noting that our debt ceiling too, the capacity that we have there because of that retired debt, in case we do hit super hard times someday, you know, um, that that's a tool that we could use because we haven't exhausted it already. Some municipalities and local governments don't have that. They exhausted it and that they're at their limits.
So I would make a motion that we adopt that adverb tax ordinance fifteen seventy three at the one percent increase. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Uh, the motion carries. Now we're on to the city manager's report.
Or there's a mayor's report if you, do you have any report, mayor?
Um, just keep the moving. As possible, that's my report.
All right, uh, Arnold Merritt, City Council, we have two items before you. The first is the PSC Green Direct Agreement Amendment. Uh, you heard a presentation at last work session, and Troy's gonna provide a briefing uh for this uh ask from council.
Hello again, council. This is, I believe, the last time you're here for me tonight. Um, the um, for your consideration tonight is an amendment to the Puget Sound Energy uh Green Direct Program Service Agreement. And for those at home, and as a reminder to the council, the Green Direct Program is something that the city of Lacey joined in two thousand seventeen. Uh, the Green Direct Program is a special green tariff energy option that is allowed by the UTC or State Utilities and Transmission uh Transportation Commission. Uh, green tariffs, they allow a large commercial and industrial customers such as a city to buy renewable energy from a specific project. And our specific project is the uh wind farm that's in Lewis County and a a little corner of it is um, you know, here in Thurston County. Um, so we did, as I said, we joined this in two thousand seventeen. Uh, at that time, we were anticipating that the wind farm would be completed and operational in two thousand nineteen. Um, there was delays to the uh construction of the project and the new operational date is this month of this year. Um, so what we would like to do is we would like to reset the term. So we get the full twenty years of taking advantage of this green power. So uh, the amendment that is for your consideration will change the term to uh start or commence here in uh this month or in two thousand twenty. Uh, and the agreement also includes a new rate schedule that is um I would say substantially lower than what is in the current contract. And what is bringing these rates down is a combination of uh liquidation damages from the delay to the project as well as a blending of the uh energy production with a uh solar farm in south central Washington. So those two factors are bringing that rate down even further than what's in the current contract. Um, what's really nice about being part of this program is all the costs and expenses are contained within this program. So when we do have these savings, they get passed on to us uh directly. So the recommendation tonight is for you, the city council, to authorize the city manager to sign the amendment extending uh this Green Direct Agreement.
I've moved to authorize the city manager to sign the PSC Green Direct Agreement as amended.
Second. Moving seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That motion carries. And we'll set Green Direct uh amendment there. So next up is the Hawks Prairie award contract uh for the sister standpipe project. Roger.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, tonight, Public Works is requesting that uh the council award the Hawks Prairie Sister Standpipe Project. Uh, I have a couple of slides I'd like to show you, kind of give an idea of uh what uh what actually took place as far as uh the the bidding went on this one because it's kind of interesting. It shows we had a really aggressive bidding climate, then also a little bit about the site itself. Can everyone see the slide?
No.
No.
No. Okay. Here we go. Better?
Yep.
Yeah.
I know I'm not as smooth as Troy. He had a lot more experience than I did tonight. Uh, the sister standpipe is actually uh uh, uh, a term given to a two million gallon reservoir that we would are going to build up in the Hawks Prairie uh treatment plant facility. So the 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 project, we opened the bids uh two weeks ago. Uh, T Bailey from Anacores uh, Washington was our low bidder. Uh, they do steel fabrication work of this nature, so they're they're well versed at it. Uh, you can see the the low bid was a substantially lower than our engineer's estimate at uh five point three million, five point four million uh versus six point three million, which is a a difference of nine hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars uh below the engineer's estimate. And again, we had eight bidders. Uh, it was a very aggressive climate. Most of them came in uh li- literally in the range of about five point six billion to five point nine million. So again, it was like I said, it's very competitive. Um, again, on this one, the working days equate to twelve months' worth of construction. Uh, we we plan on actually starting the work in in January of uh twenty twenty one. Uh, I'm gonna move on now to uh a slide that shows the actual site itself. Here you go. Just to orient you really quick, uh, north is to the top. Uh, the roundabout that you see in the upper left, that's actually the That's actually the uh, the forty first and Marvin Road Roundabout, and I I think most of the council members have been out to this site. It's it's a fairly active and busy site, it has. Two wells, two wells on it, source, what we call Source nineteen, Source thirty one. It also has the Hawks Prairie Treatment Facility, which I I think everyone's toured it. And then it has an existing four million gallon tank. And again, what this tank will allow us to do is to take the four million gallon tank offline to refurbish it, it's uh, it's due for some interior upgrades. And uh, again. It'll also help us in the future with uh, you know, water demand because again, it brings a two million gallons of extra water. And storage uh capacity for our our grid, particularly in the northeast zone. I'll I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Roger, isn't there a a road project that's supposed to happen right there as well? Uh.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, actually. Part of this project is going to improve uh frontage along Marvin Road, uh, starting at the roundabout itself. And then south to the city's property line, and then the the North Point Facility. That's just south of this, the 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 large set of series of warehouses that are in construction as we speak. Uh, they'll pick up the frontage improvements at that point and take them all the way down to the Hawks Prairie Roundabout.
Is is this, is this the one where we're expanding the roundabout uh to make it bigger for the the trucks and?
Uh, uh, no, sir, not the forty first round uh Avenue Roundabout. The Hawks Prairie Roundabout is currently under construction, it's being expanded to a multi-lane roundabout.
Okay.
Roger, can you do me a favor and stop sharing your screen?
Sure.
Uh, I'd make a motion to award Lacey Contract Number P W twenty twenty dash twenty five, the low bidder, T Bailey. Incorporated from Anacortes, Washington, an amount of five million, three hundred and fifty seven thousand, two hundred and sixty six dollars and sixty one cents.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries, thank you, Roger. So next up, we're going to to standing general committees, we we have uh. S- six of them tonight, and my recommendation would be uh for anyone um who's interested in hearing. About those uh committee reports, there's been a staff report for each one of them. Um, we've reported out on a lot of them al- already through our normal course of business, but if the. If the public has any interest in in hearing about what's going on in those different committee reports, uh, there's a staff report that's attached. Next gen that you can get there, is, do I have any objection for us missing that?
I would just say there's seven because I had two reports under utilities and not one.
Yeah, okay, um, so I I appreciate some uh saving a little bit of time there. Um, cause I know we're gonna have quite a few reports out next, you know, under boards, commissions, or committee reports, I will go first. Um, of course, uh, the the mayor's forum, we've had a couple of mayor's forums since we reported out last. Um, nothing really uh major to talk about there, um, you know, we, it's a. Good time to catch up with the fellow mayors in Thurston County and um the chair of the county commission has been coming to those every. Other meeting as well, um, but the the two reports, make big reports I have on this transportation policy board. Uh, the first uh meeting was um last, it was, believe it or not, it was back in October fourteenth. And um, on that agenda. Um, the the staff um reviewed the council's updated li- uh diversity statement and. And then summarized recent activities relating to implementing the statement. Uh, the policy board had a lengthy discussion about this statement, including how to define diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, the board also talked about how to increase diversity and and uh filling the business and community representative positions. You know, this is something that we've talked about quite a bit, is how how do we reach out to? Um, and making sure that the voice that's currently not being here heard, you know, can be heard, and so. You know, we I know we sometimes, that's it's always a difficult to do and and on our. Committees like Transportation Policy Board, you know, trying to find the those those people to um give their input is 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 really important as well. And so we're gonna try to do a better job of of reaching out um and having some more diversity within the the business and community representatives. Then um the staff also provided an overview of the draft. Climate mitigation plan, which of course we've all been hearing quite a bit about lately, but in in this um discussion, we. Had a lengthy discussion on this topic, focusing primarily on the transportation elements of of the plan. Um, and that actually going through that plan took up so much of that meeting, um, we had to move some items off to the. To the next meeting, which was met yesterday morning, um, and there's a a couple of things that. Um, we discussed, um, uh, the first one is to talk about our legislative priorities. Of course, the Transportation Policy Board, in particular me, uh, myself, I was who's been the chair for the past. Years, which is hard to believe, um, I spent a lot of time, um. Talking about our legislative priorities to our federal, to our state delegation on on the state. Uh, on the senate and the house side, so we meet with the state transportation committee, or the transportation committees on both sides. Um, as much as we possibly can. The the biggest difference in our, that's gonna happen this year, of course, is it's all gonna be sort of virtual, right? There, we're not gonna have any, some of these um going on, um, but. One thing it is gonna allow is for people, um, uh, or in testimonies in person, but one thing it's gonna allow is for people to testify. Just like we, and so in in some cases, this is gonna be the most accessible. Um, legislative session we've ever had in 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 the state of Washington, because you don't have to drive. All the way down to Olympia from all across the state, um, in order to um. Able to testify by signing up and and doing it that way. Um, but the the biggest change that came about on the transportation side um is has to do with I five and. The the Nisqually Bridges, which is something that um has been a really, uh, Lacey's really has led the way. On 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 this, along with the Nisqually um tribe, uh, looking at the current bridges, knowing. Um, that they need to be upgraded. For a couple of reasons, they're they're turning to a flooding hazard for I five, um, and also for um. Salmon habitat, um, those two bridges are, how they're designed is is um not beneficial to salmon, so. The the tribe um in the city of Lacey really has been pushing um the way. Uh, on 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 seeing a solution there, and what the solution's gonna be is gonna be um getting everything ready so we can make a federal ask. I mean, we're talking about big dollar amounts um to to change those bridges. And the the big discussion was, is do you change the bridges and you add a lane, um, which in some cases. Uh, goes against some of the overall um. Uh, uh, things that we've been. We we don't want to add lanes, we want to have more opportunities for other sources of uh transportation. But in in I five in particular, it's been very important because at some point it's gonna have to happen. And so it really makes a lot more sense for us to do that now and look at it right now, and that was actually quite a big discussion that we had. Um, and it's been uh that the full council has supported us to. To have the big ask, to get things ready so we can, you know, add a lane there and and do the things that. Um, it needs to for the foreseeable future instead of doing it sort of piecemeal. So that's a, that was a big s- talk on the legislative um side. The the other thing that we we finally um did was uh that Thurston County has set aside. Some of their transportation dollars specifically for South County projects. Uh, I know I've talked to this council quite a bit about how difficult it is for South County. Um, to do construction projects because there's, the federal dollars are so expensive, um, and you have to have. All the expertise in order to handle. And a lot of smaller South County jurisdictions don't have that on their staff, so they 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 can't even take those federal dollars in some cases, so. Um, this is the first year that the Thurston County. Um, their federal dollars that they receive for transportation, set aside specifically for South County. They're gonna take those dollars and use general fund dollars, um, and give the South County, so there's not all these loop, all these. Attached to it, and so this is the first year that they had to come up with a process of what that would look like. And that was discussed today, and a formal recommendation was will be passed on to the full. Council for consideration, so that is my report under the Transportation Policy Board. Next up is Deputy Mayor.
Um, so I'm gonna begin with a lot first, uh, rather than a jazz comm because um. I have several different um. Slides that I have to jump around for to find my notes for that, but. So Lot met November thirteenth and the work session discussed a proposal. Uh, a proposed cost allocation framework for the Capital Lake Deschutes Estuary Long Term Management Alternatives. Um, I represent Lot uh on the uh stakeholder, um. Um, section of Capital Lake Deschutes. Um, Lot Board made clear that the Lot should not bear the cost of the management of whatever decision the E I S. Of decided to go with though, which. Is often the case, they want Lot to always um contribute more than. Then our input into the problems. Um, secondly, the board had a review of the draft scope of work for the next phase of the cost of service analysis. And uh that cost of service analysis conducted in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen involved an initial review. Of the equivalent residential unit or E E R U, uh, which is the basis for Lot's wastewater charges. At that time, it was determined that residential wastewater flows had declined and further analysis was necessary. Um, and that, of course, it was put on hold because of of due to COVID and stuff, so. Um, now the current cost of service work represents a renewed effort to evaluate options. For updating the basis of wastewater charges, uh, the Board of Directors discussed key elements to include in this. Phase of analysis and uh H D R engineering was selected to provide consultant services. And the staff will provide an overview of the draft scope of work that was developed with H D R next time, so. At our business meeting that same evening, um, this is great, the board authorized approval of a rebate. To the city of Lacey under Lot's Septic Conversion Support Program for approximately. One million, two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred, six dollars and seventy cents. For the Capital City Golf Club Estate Septic to Sewer Conversion Project. Our city water resources staff, Peter Brooks, provided the board with the background for Lacey's application for applying for. The rebate, and just briefly the background, one of several steps recommended in the Urban Septic Assessment Report. Compiled compiled by an inter-jurisdictional work group in twenty fifteen. Was that Lot consider measures to facilitate conversion of urban septic systems to sewer connections? And since twenty seventeen, Lot um has implemented that septic conversion incentive rebate program. To rebate a portion of the Lot connection fee to property owners converting from septic to sewer. The program has helped accelerate the rate of septic conversions. In May of this year, the board approved a second septic conversion support program. Under this program, partner jurisdictions such as Lacey paying connection fees and other expenses. Related to a septic to sewer conversion project can receive a fifty percent rebate of the Lot connection fee for each property. That is successfully connected to the Lot program uh system. And so the city of Lacey submitted our first rebate request, uh, well, the first request. Under this new program for board consideration, uh, the city is extending sewer lines, obviously, to Capital Golf. Uh, Club Estates Neighborhood and covering all costs of septic to sewer conversion. Um, and since uh the city has commit commitments from four hundred and eleven property owners and plans to complete hookups by twenty. Twenty two, and so we went ahead and approved this, um, there's a lot of steps they have to go through, we have to go through. This meeting to city, but uh we certainly can, and uh I think it's great, and I wanna say yay. To us, so, um, and that was basically um the end of my Lot report. Um.
Deputy Mayor, this Scott, I just wanted to say thanks, that one point six million dollars or almost is a a big deal to the project. Cause you know, that's about a seventeen point seven million dollar project to the city, and so that's gonna offset that total cost, so thank you.
Yes, and well, it will get paid back um through um. E R U connections as they pay their fees, some of the uh fifty percent or whatever goes back into. Lot's coffers, so it's not like we uh Lot loses money in the long run, it's just spread over. A certain amount of time, so, but it is a great program, and so was the other one, by the way. So um joint animal services, um. We met November ninth, um, we met previously before that, and I'm going to jump around so I can cover everything. Um, we uh both looked at our budget and I and other items such as licensing. Um, and this puppy mill letter, which I will bring up, and then we also have a retreat, um. Our second retreat on November thirtieth, and so um, let me go back. Um. And again, our budget will be set at our December meeting, um. And to remind everyone, I think I brought brought it up briefly or. Either last time or the time or at during a work session, but we're basically looking at um. The um. Coming up with either uh three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty four dollars. Uh, using reserves for Lacey or for the full service for Thurston County's. Two hundred and ten K was three hundred and twenty six thousand, four hundred and ninety six uh dollars. However, Thurston County said they cannot do that, so we're going to go with probably. Um, have our hearing on using just reserves of two hundred and ten thousand. Um, and then um they will get, not get the full service, um, but that will come up in December. Uh, let me see what else, um. The licensing information, let me get up here. Um. Was um. Looking at um try, we now have kind of um. One set of costs for Olympia, Lacey and Tumwater, such as dogs being spayed or neutered is sixteen dollars, dogs not spayed. Um, or ner- neutered twenty eight dollars and cats spayed. Um, slash neutered ten dollars, cats not spayed slash neutered eighteen dollars, but the county. Instead of having dogs spayed, neutered for sixteen, they charge twelve dollars. And then the next category, dogs not spayed, neutered, uh, they charge four dollars less than. The other jurisdictions, and then cats spayed or neutered, they charge two dollars less than what we charge. And then the next one about cats not spayed or neutered, they charge another two dollars less, so. We're we we're talking about trying to make sure that everything um maybe. Um, standardize all those um costs, and no decisions have been made yet on that. The other question is the puppy mill letter ordinance um that has been handed out to you, and what. The Jazz Comm is recommending is um have passing a letter to um. Ban puppy mills in a commercial um. Commercial um areas such as PetSmart, et cetera. And I would like to get uh make sure that the council lets me um take the. This and and look at it through our general government committee, and then move it on to the council or work session. For approval or not, depending, but but the letter needs to be reviewed.
Um, that needs to, I I say we need to go straight to a a work session, no sense in going to general government on some. No sense in going to general government on something like that. Let's just go to a work session, have have that discussion.
Okay. Does everyone thumbs up on that, that we can do that?
Yeah, I mean, let's have a discussion for sure.
Yes, very definitely. Thank you very much. And basically, that's um, my report. And and I did say that Orca doesn't meet this month. They meet next month.
So next up is Councilor Cox.
Alrighty, um, I will report first on the Regional Housing Council um, on the meeting that happened today, just before our regular city council meeting as well as the meeting on October fifteenth. Um, major discussion today centered on the progress we're making and crafting an interlocal agreement on how the the money known as fourteen oh six uh, dollars, which is um, money that the state allows cities and counties to retain and put toward affordable housing. So how that money uh, will be used? Um, there is a little disagreement within the council. Some jurisdictions feel strongly that they want to put those dollars to work immediately on things like providing help with rental uh, assistance for people who can't quite cover their lease payments. And so we we talked uh, about long-term and short-term strategies. And so I think the committee working on that is going to come back with something along those lines. We also discussed a plan by City of Olympia to develop a what's known as a safe parking area for people who live in their vehicles. Uh, the site would be on Carpenter Road, just north of Martin Way. The same site that was looked at last year for a possible mitigation camp. Um, currently, I think they could only get in about twenty vehicles, although Olympia is proposing changes that would allow about forty vehicles. So uh, still much to be worked out on that. The the county has provided some funding that will help help that happen. Uh, at the October fifteenth meeting, uh, we took.
I'm sorry, Councilor Cox, is is that uh, something that's going to come? I mean, that City of Lacey is obviously going to be pretty impacted by that possible decision. Is there is there an opportunity for this? For the council to weigh in on this, where they're just, are they just going ahead and? I mean, what what what's the next step there? Because there's a, there's a lot that goes into that decision, right? It's not saying, okay, well, forty car, there's so much into that goes into that. And I just, I just, I want to know if if Lacey's going to be. Is is the only, our only opportunity to have comment on that is through the regional house? That this committee or? Do you know?
I'm gonna let Scott correct me if I'm mistaken, but I, my understanding is that um, it, our comment would have to come through the Regional Housing Council and that the city really, because it's not on city, in city limits, we really have nothing to say other than, hey, you know, this this will have effect on Lacey and, you know, so that's why we have a voice at the table.
It's got, so can you give us?
Yeah, I mean, Councilor Cox is correct. I mean, Thurston County is a permitting agency, because even Oats and Lacey's U G A, it's still the permitting authority. And then it is property owned by the City of Olympia. Um, so we are in discussion and I could probably maybe make sense to even bring Rick in if he can, if John could do that. Um, I know they've been discussing it with it, but in terms of, you know, having final input or final direction, um, we don't really have that means and R H C is probably the best form for that.
And we we relayed some of the concerns that we have about it. But just impacts on law enforcement, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and that 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 is the condition is is we are a common, we're neighbors, so we have the opportunity to comment either through the Regional Housing Council or through the the permitting process. Uh, we are having conversations at the staff level of what that type of facility could look like and what the setup needs are. And and as Councilor Cox has mentioned, there's going to be some time, probably the earliest anything could happen would be in January. But the uh, the biggest concerns we have is um, you know, what is the impact on our service, our emergency services? So we're constantly convers- having conversations about how that role looks like, where is the uh, Sheriff's Office in these discussions? And uh, and then also um, you know, how is it going to be set up with utilities and 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 managed? And then also uh, where are the rules and management plans? So they are looking at contract with the service provider to provide that management and with that would come a a uh, operational rules um, and and uh, conduct rules. But again, it's always in that enforcement. So we are constantly engaged in the conversation and can keep uh, the council apprised as things progress. And it, and as Councilor Cox has said too, in addition, it's at the table at the Regional Housing Council, so we have a voice there and and how that progresses in terms of its management in operation, if it does end up being uh, located in that location.
Okay, well, I mean, okay, I'll let you continue.
Andy, you're.
I appreciate it.
You are welcome to come to the next Regional Housing Council meeting. It's four thirty on the third Thursday.
Okay, I may take you up on that.
Go for it, go for it. So I'm continuing on with Housing Council. In our October fifteenth meeting, um, we took two major steps toward addressing homelessness. One was endorsing a request by Interfaith Works um, to county commissioners for about one million dollars in grants to help Interfaith Works purchase land in Olympia. It's the old Foam and Fabric uh, facility on Martin Way. Um, and knock that one down and erect a fifty-two hundred square foot structure known as a sprung structure. It's a modular building, but it's very heavy duty. I think guaranteed to last at least fifteen years, but probably double that. And this building, once it goes up, will house the people who were overflowed from the uh, site at twenty-eight, twenty-eight Martin Way, where the the new shelter is being built. They will be housed in this as well as another fifteen people that with money that State Commerce Department is providing for more shelter beds. Um, like the shelter that it's replacing, it's going to have twenty-four hour supervision. They'll have COVID screening, have hygiene facilities, twice a day meals and other services. And then after the new shelter is built and these people move there, this modular structure um, will serve as a day center and uh, warming center and providing social services um, to the homeless people in our community. And if all goes well, this structure could be open by January. And in case you're curious about the people, they already had to move out on the twenty-eight, twenty-eight Martin Way site. First Methodist Church in Olympia is, has agreed to provide them shelter until they can be moved into this new facility. So it's, it it's quite a, quite a process.
You have a question, Deputy Mayor?
I did very quickly, because the um, modular um, um, foam places across the street from the other, I mean, you literally have to cross a fairly um, large um, street, well, road to get over there from the other place. Have they figured out how to move people across back and forth from there when it's a day center kind of a thing? Am I correct that it is going to be where the foam place is, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's on the right going into Olympia. The other place is on the left um, going into Olympia, so you're crossing Martin Way. How do people, how did they figure out getting people back and forth from the there? Or did they? Or do they care?
I'm not quite sure I'm following your concern, Cynthia, but the um, I think those details remain to be worked out. Uh, you know, it's, it is, the site is on Martin Way, which is the most heavily traveled of our transit, intercity transit runs.
Yeah, I was thinking that they may not, because they're not that far apart. If they walked, they would probably be trying to run across the street. I was worried about, I I, maybe it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, well, I think it's going to be a while before that becomes a, an issue. Um, I'd like to move on now to intercity transit and this report covers a meeting last night, November eighteenth, November fourth and October twenty-first. I told you guys, we had a lot of them stacked up. So last night uh, was pretty simple. We authorized the general manager to enter a one-year contract extension with the amalgamated transit union uh, that provides for a three percent raise. Uh, the thinking on both the union's part and management's part is that there's so many unknowns right now with the economy, with COVID, with all these different things that rather than trying to bargain a whole new contract, it just made sense to try to keep things going this way. Um, probably of most interest to the community is that the next step in restoring bus service cuts because of the COVID crisis is scheduled to occur on December the sixth. And then we're going to have another restoration and service change probably in March. Now, if if things start going too backwards with COVID and restrictions, we may have to look at that again, but um, the agency is determined to try to restore ridership and services just as quickly as is safely possible. Um, another development is that on November first, they opened, reopened the Olympia Transit Center, the island there, so it's fully functioning now. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much. Next up is Councilmember, oh, Councilman Miller.
All right, I'll keep it brief. I know it's getting late. Uh, I'll start with um, T R P C uh, who met on uh, the sixth of November. As you guys can probably imagine, COVID has been taking up a lot of the conversation uh, and uh, the numbers surrounding COVID. And so uh, in tracking our regional uh, G D P, we're we're down from twelve point nine uh, billion to ten point five uh, as a region. Uh, the unemployment rate, of course, in March, from March to April quadruped, nearly quadrupled from four point four to sixteen point one, but has steadily uh, had a decline through the summer. Uh, and at the time of the meeting, uh, the last information we had was we were at eight point five. Uh, those hardest hit were the twenty-five to thirty-four year olds. Uh, and after them, the thirty-five to forty-four year olds, not far behind uh, at twenty-one percent, so just a three-point gap between the two. Uh, you know, basically, everybody was really hard hit. Uh, and and, you know, now that we're going into another lock-in, we'll just see how those numbers change. Uh, claims by education, we've, I, well, at least I thought was probably one of the most um, didactic charts, I guess you want to say, because uh, the high school diploma, uh, you know, crowd was hit uh, with twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent. Uh, some college people, uh, who, you know, some people who did some college, uh, they were hit by twenty-five percent. Uh, associate's degrees was actually hit less than bachelor's degrees, uh, P H Ds and uh, uh, master's degrees, you know, uh, graduate degrees obviously were hit the least in terms of education. I thought of this as a good tool for, you know, classrooms, uh, you know, furthering the 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 education goal for for some of the kids who think that, you know, maybe they won't go to, go to college or whatever the case may be. And, you know, how to, you know, basically pandemic-proof your life with an education. Uh, most of the claims were, you know, in terms of industry, uh, you know, obviously, it's it's those industries where, you know, there's a lot of interaction, more touching going on, uh, like uh, food and healthcare and retail and construction and and so uh, info and tech and real estate and finance were the hit uh, the least. So the least amount of jobs were lost in in those sectors. Um, the number of small businesses opening dramatically plummeted. Uh, negative eighteen percent in Thurston County. And so uh, you know, principles for moving forward. Uh, just, you know, trying to, you know, outline strategic steps for moving forward safely. We did uh, cover some other areas on the agenda um, in 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 the membership that we pay for for this uh, committee, we found that um, you know, every dollar that we put in, we're getting four point four dollars in state and federal dollars uh, back is is the the information that was handed handed out uh, at that meeting. Uh, I think uh, the mayor already covered some of the South County things that that were covered in the meeting. Um, there is an ask of twenty-three million dollars for six communities uh, to improve their roadways and frontages. Uh, those include Bekota, Tenino, Rainier, Rochester, Grand Mound and Yelm. Uh, so there's going to be a legislative push to uh, bring those those areas and those towns, uh, better roads, sidewalks and and those types of things. Uh, I'll move on to Thurston Thrives, who met on October uh, nineteenth and uh, just two days ago, had another meeting. Um, we covered mostly the October nineteenth meeting though. Since yesterday, we had a guest, or day before yesterday, we had a guest speaker. Uh, in in this one, we went over a lot of different um, you know, race, race and equity issues. And we talked about things, you know, like uh, life expectancy for different uh, ethnic backgrounds, suicide rates and uh, those who have considered suicide. Um, and uh, you know, drugs and and who, you know, is there, is there a correlation between race and drugs? Is there a correlation between homelessness and and race? Is there, you know, correlation between suicide uh, and and race? Um, we did find that seventy-seven percent uh, uh, of suicides happen by firearm. Uh, at least in this part of the country. Um, twenty-three percent came in as other. Uh, when when we talked about, you know, who's considered suicide, um, minorities can suicide, consider suicide the most. And of the minorities, Hispanics uh, came in at the top, at twenty-six percent, have said, yeah, I've I've thought about it. Um, the, we did have a representative from the uh, Thurston County Health Department who let us know that they have some mobile testing units available to, and I, of course, volunteered the City of Lacey uh, for one of those mobile testing. And we have uh, been trying to push that forward and get it through. It looks like we um, are gaining some ground and may have found a location. Uh, so look forward to some testing, more testing coming available, or should I say another testing location becoming available in the city uh, real soon. And not sure uh, exactly, you know, what the hours are going to be, but uh, I do know that the Hawks Prairie Testing Facility, you know, which is the only drive-through, no appointment needed, no cost facility is a city block long, all day, every day. And I only say that because it's right outside this window, so I get to watch it all day, every day. Uh, I do not have a report for T C C A T, and I have not had a lot meeting since the last time we last Lot report that I gave, so that is my report.
Uh, Scott, can you give us an update on what that timeline may be for that second location?
So I think it's going to be um, fairly soon. There's trying to work out the final document between the landowner, which is Capital Development Company, and obviously the Thurston County um, Health Department. I've heard they're looking at hours from ten to one. And it's going to be on Wednesdays. Um, they're still looking at uh, if that's going to be the final hours or not, but that will be the second site. It's off Pacific Avenue um, in an old uh, restaurant location, actually right across from the old Skippers is where that location is.
Those three hours once a week?
That's what they've been looking at. They're trying to do a, an additional site. I think we can all agree that we like more hours and more resources, but I think what they're trying to do is to get a second site with a. but I think what they're trying to do is to get a second site with the um, the resources that they do have.
I know, that's good.
I had the same concern, uh, and, and I, I've been pushing for more hours. And I, I talked to the commissioner, uh, who, you know, has a little bit of sway with the county. And he uh, agreed to work with me on getting, you know, pushing for some more, more than three hours. It's just that, you know, most of the people, we have a lot of seniors and they can't make it out here to Hawks Prairie. And so we have got to put something mid-town for them, uh, because, you know, they, they, they can barely gonna make it out here. And they are a, a, a very important group and they're a high concern. And we need to get some testing where they can get to it quick. So more hours.
It's a, I, I think it's a definitely a good part of town, um, for sure, close to Panorama. Yeah, and then of course, we'd love to see more than three hours, but I guess some of it goes on, on funding. But county has private CARESAC funding too, for, for this in particular. So, you know, anyway, it, thank you, Councilmember Miller, for your, your leadership on this. I, I, everyone in Lacey appreciates it. Um, that being said, uh, Councilmember Stedman.
I have a quick report. Um, Community Action Council does, uh, did not have a meeting. Um, I'm pretty sure their uh, exit um, uh, audit is just about done, so I'll have a report on that soon. Um, other than that, the SWAC met and the only substantial thing that that's worth reporting on, I had it, my phone just timed out. Um, let's see here, let me. So um, so they're, uh, they briefed us on the legislate, leg- legislations of um, preview for their session. Um, and it's really all budget concerns. And um, the work plan, the twenty-twenty-one work plan for SWAC. Uh, my major concern on this was nowhere on this plan uh, was the RFP process. And everybody, you know, you've heard me report on it for the last year and a half. Um, it, it's going out to bid and they're, you know, at the beginning of the year, um, that's in full swing and it's not even mentioned until you get down to June. Um, and that's where they evaluate and update us on the RFP process. I will say that Kitsap County is going through the same process that we're about to start. And the preliminary numbers are coming out to twenty to thirty percent pay increase or, or rate increase. Um, that is alarming and I've been saying it now for two years, that it's a mistake. And we have, we have this work on the books and, and if, and if we were to just enact the five-year extension, which they enacted the first two years of it, enact the whole three, the whole, the remaining three, all five years. It freezes the rate, guarantees we won't pay anymore and we're definitely not gonna pay any less, even with the new contract. So that's my concern. I, I can't get into details because it's signed a um, release um, about the RFP process. So I'm really limited on what I can say and cannot say about it. But this is gonna, if we continue down this road, it's gonna cost our ratepayers a lot of money. It's all about transportation and, and ultimately out of the top ten uh, contractors that can perform this work, there's really only four that can bid on it and really three, because the one doesn't even have a a, um, landfill anywhere near here. They don't have a landfill. So where they're gonna take it, they have to subcontract it from one of the other three, which is more money. And then you're using all our, and one of the landfills is in Oregon. So we can use, use the wear and tear on all our infrastructure just to take jobs away from Washington and give them to Oregon. And I'm telling you, it's just, you know, and then the chance of not using the railroads and, and multimodal systems of, um, so it's a big concern and people should be aware of it and should look into it. Um, like I said, it's a big mistake. We, we have five years at a, at a solid rate and we should look at that. Um, and uh, and that's not even bringing into consideration the infrastructure that the new contract um, awardee would have to get. We saw IT, they just, I think Carolyn could probably say, we just got our last buses a few months ago. Or, or maybe we're still waiting on a couple and it's been two years. They, they think they're gonna do it in one year. It's, it's alarming and concerning, but I'd say concerning, not alarming. Um, and people should be aware of it, but I'll leave it at that and that's my report.
Uh, appreciate it. Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh, in the uh, in the interim of waiting to, to give reports, we've had uh, two VCB board meetings, one on the twentieth of October and another one on the seventeenth of November. And uh, we were saddened to learn that our CEO, Shauna Stewart, is uh, had, well, has now stepped down uh, from her position due to health concerns. And the VCB is uh, forming a hiring committee and will likely seek the help of a third party to find a suitable replacement. Uh, in the meantime, we have Jeff Bo, who was the Senior Director of Tourism Development. Uh, for experience Olympia is now filling the CEO position for the interim. Uh, for our Economic Development Council, the board met on October twenty-eighth. And some highlights, we discussed PTAC funding for the next year with a proposed budget of uh, one point seven million. Uh, PTAC is a procurement technical assistance center. It's a statewide program funded primarily by the DOD and helps private firms to successfully find, bid and perform on government contracts. And so far this year, the PTAC program has helped our South Sound region with an economic impact of over seventy-two million dollars. We have an Innovation and Forecast Expo being held on December third and will be virtual. The theme of the conference will be economic innovation through our uh, COVID disruption. And our State Department of Commerce has awarded the EDC Scale Up Program a grant uh, to expand the program to statewide in support of businesses with the curriculum to help with industry growth. And to summarize, Scale Up uh, is a very successful program that currently has over two hundred and sixty local businesses involved from, in one format or another. And helping this program reach the entire state should make a positive impact and further puts our local EDC on the significance map. And I was gonna say something about Gold Star Family Memorial Foundation, but uh, we are continuing on in our efforts to raise funds and awareness uh, for our soon-to-be monument that's gonna hit Lacey Civic Plaza. Uh, we do have uh, scales and maps and uh, um, some pretty high-tech stuff that we can see potential sites uh, for the monument. It's gonna be really uh, nice to, to see it start to break ground in the upcoming months or however long it takes for us to get to that uh, fundraising goal. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, we've uh, now reached the end of our agenda as uh-
Andy, if I may?
Sure.
Hey, I just wanted to tip my hat to Gary Edwards, um, beat me in the um, Board of County Commissioners race. Um, you know, we, we uh, did the best we could. I tried to um, spread what the great things we're doing in Lacey countywide, but it just wasn't in the cards. So I want to say congratulations, Gary Edwards. And also, um, before our last uh, um, in between this meeting and our last one, was the Marine Corps' two-hundred-and-forty-fifth birthday. And I just want to say happy birthday to all the Marines out there and uh, happy Veterans Day the day following that. So happy Veterans Day to everybody that served and uh, and thanks uh, for everyone's support.
Yeah, Councilmember Cox?
Just wanted to share a little bit of good cheer too from intercity transit. While of course, we're not gonna have the lighted vehicle parade in Lacey and Tom Water won't have its parade. Intercity Transit has decided it will decorate the Jingle Bus and it will be circulating in our communities to try to brighten spirits, so.
That is really good.
Beautiful, so I hope everybody enjoys it.
That's good news. Well, what I was gonna also say is uh, between now and we meet again, it's gonna be Thanksgiving. And I know this is a just been a, twenty-twenty's been one of the craziest years we could ever come up with. And, and we know that, you know, we, we'd hit our Thanksgiving and uh, unfortunately, a lot of us, you know, are, are gonna be uh, you know, spend time with our family and friends and do our normal routines that we have, traditions that we've done in years past. And so, of course, it breaks my heart not to see my extended family on, on Thanksgiving. So I give a shout out to them, I love you and I'll, I'll miss you guys next, next Thursday. But uh, you know, we're almost through this year, knock on wood. And uh, hopefully everyone continues to stay safe out there and um, hopefully we'll get a, a, a grip on the, the rise in cases of COVID right now. Um, and uh, hopefully December fourteenth, we can, you know, get back, head in the right direction for sure. But uh, I, I just want to wish this council and everyone listening that happy Thanksgiving. Um, thank you, council, for all, all you do for the City of Lacey, it's much appreciated. And uh, we've reached this in, end of our agenda. I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey. See ya.
Have a Thanksgiving, everybody.
Bye, everybody.